Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, welcome to our county commission meeting. We have a lot of meeting documents that are on the end of the podium here next to Commissioner Hyburger. And anybody's online or watching this on TV, those documents are also available down at the auditor's office. So they are public record and anybody open to review. If you need a listening device, see Carol or one of the county staff. And if you have one of these with you, you may want to avoid embarrassment and put it on silent. We'll move on to our routine business and we look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our commission meeting minutes from July 27th, 2021.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $477,422.40.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have numerous reports, actually only one. Public Advocate Meeting Minutes for July 26th, 2021. Might be just me, but I read the minutes. That's not a report. I mean, I'd like to see a little more meat on the bone when we get a report.
You should come to the meeting and do a lot of talking.
Is that right? Anything to add to the minutes on that, Commissioner Barth? You were at it?
No, things are going well there.
Personnel actions. Look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action?
Second.
Motion from Hyburger, second from Barth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And good morning, Carrie.
A quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We need to be more snappy up here on getting our motions in seconds.
Snappy.
I'll go with that. Significant Employee Anniversaries for August.
I have a short list, but adding up to a lot of years of service. We have Audie Murphy in the State's Attorney's Office celebrating five. Brooke Goodell, also in the State's Attorney's Office, celebrating five years of service. Ethan Pollack in the jail, celebrating 20. And Jill Weber, also in the State's Attorney's Office, celebrating 35. So congratulations to all of them and our gratitude for their many years of service.
Yep, yep. Big thank you. So, okay. Volunteers in the county.
End list is creeping up towards that 200. I think our official count is 192, serving over nine departments of the county.
Close to pre-COVID levels, or?
Not quite there, but we're getting there. We're going in the right direction.
Alrighty. Comments? Thank you, Carrie.
Alright, thank you.
We have several abatements. Begin, bring up Chris. RDID 51818, 2020 property tax, $2,251.62. What do we got?
Good morning, Chris. LALA Equalization Office. Yeah, these are all veterans exemptions, so no surprise there. The drill is they're permanently and totally disabled and once they get their award date, if that award date precludes our assessment notices, then we, out of practice, go back and credit them their money back. So we are recommending approval of these. And you already read the first one.
What is the amount? Is it at 100?
Excuse me?
How much is abated? Is it based on the value?
150, the first 150,000.
First 150, has that changed year to year?
Yep. Nope, it changed once. It used to be 100,000. I don't remember the timeline and then they increased it to 150. So we have to check and find out if we're going back in time. We'll apply 100,000 for the one year and then 150 for the next. But it's the first $150,000 of value.
Okay, okay. So look for a motion in a second for this abatement.
So moved. Second.
Alright, roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries. RDID 88257, 2019 property tax, 152856. And same RDID for 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,251.62.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. RDID 83540, 2020 property taxes, $376.30.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries. RDID 29530 for 2019 and 2020 property taxes. 2019 at $1,528.57 and 2020 at $2,251.63.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Moving on, notice and request. Authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing on August 17th, 2021 to consider the 2021 Burn JAG Program Joint Spending Plan. Captain Bosman, I think you're on the phone.
Yes, I am. Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, the Sheriff's Office. And the initial agreement was signed last week on the Burn JAG, which stands for Justications Grant, in Houston, the city of Sioux Falls. Part of that application process is we need to have a period of public comment that would be open for citizens to comment on the spending plan that we are going to be proposing to utilize these funds for. With your authorization today, we would be setting a date of Tuesday, August 17th, 9:00 a.m. Back in the commission room during a normal commission meeting to have that public comment period. And we can post notice by the auditors to do that.
Thank you, Joe. Questions for Mr. Bosman?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
You bet. Alright. Make sure I didn't miss anything here. Planning and zoning notices. First reading for rezoning, 2101, and authorize auditor to publish notice of hearing on August 24th, 2021 to consider an amendment to the revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls to rezone from the A1 EG district to the Laurel Ridge Plan Development District. Kevin.
Good morning, Kevin Hopeman from the county planning department. Yes, this is the first reading for rezoning, 2101. The location is north of Sioux Falls, near the veteran cemetery along Slip Up Creek Road. This item was heard before the Joint Planning Commission at the July 26th Planning Commission meeting. The Joint Planning Commission did have a split decision at that where the county recommended approval and the city recommended denial of the request. Since this is the first reading, the action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish the notice of the public hearing. The public hearing is being requested for August 24th at 4:00 p.m. That was a change that was just recently made with adjustments to scheduling on the 24th. So the meeting will be at 4:00 p.m. instead of the typical time. So, is there any questions?
Kind of have one, I guess. This was, did not pass the joint. I mean, the county approved, the city didn't. Help me understand, the city wants $80,000 in platting fees to add, to replat this? Is that correct?
So, yes, at the presentation, it was brought up that the city is requesting that the petitioner replats both this property and the existing event center barn property into their zoning districts. That way, there is not multiple zoning districts on the same parcel. And by the process of replating, the city will charge the replating fees or their fees for doing so. And that was something approximately $86,000 or something like that, that the previous wedding barn was required to pay. So the assumption is that this one would be similar to that. So it's unknown exactly how much it would be.
Look for a motion to set the date of hearing.
That's my motion.
Second.
Alrighty, motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Moving on. First readings for rezoning, 2102, and authorize auditor to publish notice of hearing on August 24th, 2021 to consider amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County, rezone from A1 EG to light industrial. Same property?
No, so this property is located by Valley Spring. Yeah, and the, let's see, kind of an industrials district on the north. Can't get the thing to move. Click to the next one. On the northeast side of the town. Their staff did notify the town via email and a phone call. We didn't receive any response, so we're assuming the city's okay with it. There is other industrial and commercial zonings in the area. The planning commission heard it again on the July 26th meeting. And this was just the county and they recommended approval for this. Again, today's action is to authorize the auditor publish notice of hearing. And this would be August 24th at the 9:00 a.m. meeting of the regular county board.
Same day, different time.
Yep.
Alrighty.
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Kevin. We have no petitions for compromise lien and we are at the opportunity for public comment. Anybody here like to take a moment? Good morning, Scott. We'll let Mr. Cunningham jump up first.
Good morning. John Cunningham, 4904 South Oxbo in Sioux Falls. In this morning's news, August leader, there was a publication of the proposed budget apparently. And I had one question. Budgets are kind of an interest of mine. There's an item of $4.18 million for support of the poor. And I was wondering if, is all of that, or how much of that might be the indigent healthcare? Be interesting for people to know how much healthcare is already being provided to the poor in Minnehaha County. So I don't, it doesn't seem to be broken out separately. Is that all indigent healthcare? Or is that just a part of it? Thank you.
What was the category? What was the category again? Just, I didn't hear what you said.
The category was support of the poor.
Support, okay, thank you.
And Lori Montes is right here in her office runs that. That's her portion of the budget. So Human Services probably could give you a line-by-line item breakdown of that. Okay for throwing you under the bus, Lori?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
So.
Just off the top of my head, I think $500,000.
Let's, if you do that offline, yeah, yeah. So she can address that to you later personally. So, thank you. Scott, come on up.
Good morning. I'm Scott Wick with the W. H. Lion Fairgrounds and Sioux Empire Fair. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. And on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff, we want to thank you for your support throughout the year and especially the quick response to the roof. This will be the first year in the expo in the center room, and I believe this is my 10th or 11th year, that we have an activity under that center room every day of the fair. So when we open up Saturday, there's livestock events all the way through the following Saturday. So that was a key part in getting that fixed. And again, we thank you very much for that. We also had the repair on the water, so we have a great water supply over on the west part for the open livestock events as well. So we kick off on Thursday, 5:00 p.m. with Old Dominion. That's a concert we've been working on since 2018 and scheduling conflicts and with what happened last year, we were unable to have that show. So we kick off Thursday with Old Dominion. Friday is our normal sneak peek. There's no concert. Saturday, we have Frankie Ballard. Sunday, Hairball. Monday, we have Parmally and Hardy. Tuesday, we have Randy Hauser with Colt Ford. And we're doing something a little different on Wednesday. We have Joe Trill. He's a 9/11 firefighter from New York that survived the towers when they went down. And he'll be speaking for 90 minutes on the grandstand in front of everybody Wednesday night. And we've put it out to everybody through Jason Gierman with the Emergency Management Services. All first responders, veterans, firefighters, everybody is invited with proper ID plus one to come see that for free. We think it's a pretty cool story. He has, talked to him extensively and so I won't talk about him anymore. But I encourage everybody to come out and see it. He has a great story to tell. And then on Thursday, we have Jameson Rogers with Larry Fleet. And then we get the stage out of there and we're bringing in a big air ATV act on Friday, which helps us out in a couple of different ways. Thursday, the stage can leave. Then we bring in this big air ATV act that doesn't require any dirt. After that, we get work all through Friday night to get ready for the rodeo on Saturday. So everybody showing up, Carnival operator said, all the other places they've played up north anyway have been very well attended and they've had very good turnouts where they've been. So we're pretty excited. As always, we can never control the weather, but there's a couple of hot days forecast, but it changes day to day this time of the year. So we're really excited for the 82nd Annual Sioux Empire Fair. I dropped off a bag in the office that has credentials and parking passes for the commissioners. So I'd answer any questions if anybody has any, but come on out and come out often.
Questions to Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that I'm wearing one of my Sioux Empire Fair shirts from years gone by and it still fits.
Perfectly. And Commissioner Bender brought her.
Oh, yep, wrapping the shirt here for you.
Yep.
That looks good.
Alrighty. Any other comments? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Big event in the community. Looking forward to it.
Alright, we'll be back and report when it's all over. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else here for public comment? Alrighty. Moving on then, regular business. Authorize chair to sign a lease agreement between Minnehaha County and Four Fat Guys LLC for fleet truck storage. That is the name of the LLC, Four Fat Guys. Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Steve Gorle and Hennepin, Minnehaha County Highway Superintendent. My first time in front of a board since I got this job, so I apologize. Yes, as Commissioner Karski said, we were very fortunate to find some temporary facilities that would work for our snowplows that are going to be displaced once our project starts on September 7th. And looking for your approval to move forward with the lease. We had trucks there last week. It's going to fit really nice. And Fred Konecki, our fleet supervisor, did a great job lining this property up.
Alrighty. How long is that lease for? I didn't look.
One year.
It's a 12-month lease, okay.
For some reason, if our building project gets delayed, we can go to a month-to-month after that.
Get them out of the, get them out of the weather. You bet. Alright, look for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero with one stint, absent, I guess. Alright, moving on. Authorize chair to sign an agreement, participate in the 2021 SD DOT County Pavement Striping Program.
Yep, this is our annual striping program. There is one change for this year. The South Dakota DOT is going to a different type of paint. They're going to a high build paint. I do not have experience with that, but it's a different polymer that dries faster. It can go up to 30 mil thickness, so you can put either bigger beads or more beads in. Has more elasticity, so as the pavement moves, it stays in place and doesn't crack. It's, it might be a little bit more than what we need for annual painting, but there will be a benefit. It does come at a higher cost, but we do have money in our budget in that category to cover those funds. The other portion is for recess grooves. It's something that we do quite often in Minnesota. I'm glad to see South Dakota's doing that. You come and you do a 3/16th of an inch grind where the striping goes. And you come in and paint it so that the plows don't come and traffic don't take your striping off, so you can get a five to seven-year life out of your pavement markings. So that's a good program and the best part of that portion is 100% covered by federal funds at no cost to the county.
Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, five to nothing. Alright.
Jacob Mars will come up and introduce our interns and Aaron, our new employee.
I think most of us read the presentation and I think we're all looking forward to this.
They work for Minnehaha County.
Jacob Mars, Highway Department. I'd first like to introduce Aaron Woolent. He's our newest employee out of the county highway department. Aaron comes from a consulting firm in Sioux Falls here. Before that, he went to school at SDSU for a couple of years, School of Mines for a couple of years, drove truck for a few years and was a Marine prior to that. So we're excited to have him on staff, filling Melissa's old position, so.
Thank you for your service. Welcome and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Side note, the main reason we're here today is the two interns that we got for culvert inspections this year. We do culvert inspections every three years to assess our culvert conditions, figure out which ones we need to prioritize for replacement over the next few years. Anthony Peters is from Madison, going to South Dakota State University. Jack Rabbit, he'll be a sophomore this year. Both are in civil engineering departments in their respective schools. And then Noah Simansky is at UNL, also from Sioux Falls here. And he's going to be a sophomore as well, so I'll let them do the presentation.
Excellent.
Hello, gentlemen.
Good morning. Good morning. So this is our 2021 culvert internship and we've already had our introduction, so we'll get right into it. So in the beginning, coming in, we.
Mr. Chairman, they need to use the mic a little better because.
Yep.
Graham, you're going to want to hear this.
Is that good?
Thank you.
So kind of coming in, I kind of knew what to expect because my brother Jake Simansky, who I think also did a presentation here three years ago, he kind of told me what was up with the job, the internship, so I kind of liked it, how it sounded. So that's how I knew of it and how I came into it.
Yeah, I found out about this internship from a family member who had been kind of looking at stuff since she also works for a firm, not as an engineer, but had kind of looked into that area. I did the interview and wasn't entirely sure what to expect, except that I'd have to earn my paycheck every week and do some rigorous data collection and maybe have some tight schedules. And overall, this was the case, but it was easier than expected to complete and it was good work.
Alrighty.
The first day, we were shown presentations and walked through common issues and things we might run into with the culverts, so we would know what to look for. And then that was the first half of our first day. In the second half, we were sent out and just started looking at them.
Didn't really know what to expect the first day, but kind of figured it out. So the second week and kind of onwards, so we didn't really know each other going into it, but we'd be spending 40 hours a week together in the truck. So that was kind of scary coming in, but I think, I would say, we had a lot of similarities. So it's pretty easy to get together. We were kind of scared at the beginning. We didn't know if we'd be able to get it all done. We went to like some of the most like busy parts of the county and we kind of figured out that we would be done pretty early. So it got done a couple of weeks ago. Found a lot of bad culverts. So that'll be something the county will be doing for the next couple of summers, probably.
And so starting out the first day, we barely even got a mile done and found out we had to get 367 miles done. That seemed like a pretty big task. But after getting into a couple of weeks, we got into the groove of it. And so we knew what to look for. We knew about how long it would take and just got it done from there. We also learned the importance of sunscreen very quickly. And some of the things that were hard were adding new culverts into the system, especially when our service was going in and out and the iPad was dying and plugging it in. Yeah, overheating. So we got good at figuring that stuff out and bringing mobile chargers and improving our IT skills.
So we also, Shannon and Jacob, had us do different things throughout the internship to kind of broaden what we would learn. So we attended a meeting at the be, like the first week that we started, just to kind of show what was going to happen near the Amazon building, which I'm sure all of you guys are very aware of. We went to a different couple of firms just to see what that was kind of like. And it was a very good opportunity for us, kind of see what the private sector had to offer. And we went with Jenna to look at a paving inspection and see what she did on inspections.
Some other things we did were, we went with Civil Design on the bridge near Baltic, going into Baltic from the west, did a bridge inspection. We also met with Banner down by Wall Lake about a culvert inspection, taking some metal arch pipes and putting in concrete ones so that it lasts a lot longer. Don't have to worry about it for a long time. And then we also, just the other day, went through the water reclamation plant off of 60th Street and got a tour there, looked at some of the different processes that they use to clean the water and make it safe to use again.
So Shannon really likes his different types of lunches, so he brought us to a different couple of places. I'd never been before, like Pickle Barrel. I'm from Sioux Falls and I know since he's not.
I'm from Madison. I had been to Pickle Barrel a long time ago, but I had no idea what Buffalo Trading Post was until we were given an address to show up to. And so those were some good experiences.
They have good burgers, don't they?
Oh, yeah. We had the fried chicken, actually.
Very good.
But, yeah, so we had, went to Bagel Boy, Sand Bar. Yep, Gilberto's.
Pretty good.
Had Walleye Nuggets for the first time. So some of the best things about the internship, it was a great opportunity. Very thankful for it. Got to work outside and see the whole county, which I hadn't done before. I'd mostly only been around Sioux Falls or Dell Rapids. And I like getting the experience in data collection, management, and inspection.
So this was one of my first jobs, my first job where I worked outside, so it was a lot different. I worked at Hy-Vee before. So this job, even though it was 10 hours a day, flew by pretty quick, so that's something I loved. The internship really opened my eyes to the different things in civil engineering. After a freshman year, we don't really know. Even after all four years of college, we don't really know. But this was really good at like showing us a broad experience of what to look for. And everyone at the office is pretty cool to work with, so that definitely makes the job a lot better.
So although it was a great job, there are some things that aren't the best. And some of the things that I disliked were extremely hot days, which you could deal with, but there was sweating and the sunburn. The repetition of getting in and out of the pickup constantly, because each culvert only takes about three minutes or three to five minutes. And so you get in and out and it just gets kind of, you get sore from that sometimes. One of the things was going and looking at culverts that were nearly buried, because you had to get flat down on your stomach and try and crank your neck the right way to look inside of them. And then probably the worst part was the second week, I had the worst sunburn of my life as well as a cold.
So we also dealt with a lot of insects. Probably the first month, we would find probably tick on us every hour, a couple of ticks on us every hour. So that was kind of scary. And near the end, there are these like giant, like black bugs that would like buzz near us. So that's pretty scary trying to look down underneath and they would come zooming out.
Not sure if they'd sting us or.
Yeah. Waking up early, I mean, we'd been to COVID schooling for the past year, didn't really have to wake up. I probably woke up at like 10 o'clock usually. And then going to like 5:45 a.m. is what I usually do, so that was pretty hard. And then, do you want to?
Yeah. And so the picture here is my left hand is the normal hand and then my right hand is where I got bit by a mystery bug and had it swell up like a stress ball for about a week while I took Benadryl. So that was one of the good experiences.
I was driving for most of that week. So we gained a lot out of it. We learned kind of what to look for, what type of professions and people we'd be working with. And we learned, also learned that outdoor jobs are pretty good jobs. I mean, you're out in the field, get to go outside when it's nice weather. It's usually not too hot, too cold, not raining a whole lot.
So we also got to practice and learn the importance of data collection for projects and structural inspections with the culverts and the bridges. We got to learn some of the small things, like showing up on time, having a clean car. We had those things stressed to us pretty early on by both the, one of the workers there and the operations manager. And it was both of our first 40-hour weeks. I had a job that was almost 40 hours, but it was kind of hours here and there.
And we also learned kind of how to fill out a timesheet. We never, I've never done it before. I would just clock in and clock out. And we also got a lot of appreciation for what the crews do back there because. because I've never worked construction or anywhere near constructions. And they do a very good job, pretty cool people.
It was good to see what they did day in and day out and working with them, because that's what we've been doing since we've been done with the inspections, is going out with the crews, working on the highways. So it's been good to see what they do and appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think every nineteen-year-old would benefit from working for a retired Marine Corps sergeant. The experience there would be worth it. But, you know, the county's gained a lot too from your work over the summer. It gives us a good idea of this, you know, shape of our system, the culverts. So we appreciate what you've done and we learned that we probably should send you out with tick collars or something. I don't know. But, you know, the work that you've done is going to benefit the county for several years. And thank you for what you did. Other questions or comments from these two?
I'm just wondering if there's any good story behind the dog crossing in the Spryze Rock.
So the dog crossing, we were on County Highway 130. We were doing a culvert that was under the road but going into somebody's yard. And a friendly dog came up to us and just wouldn't go away. And so when one of us stayed on the side of the road that the house was on, and then he went to the other side and the dog started to follow him. And there was a semi coming and it had to, we heard the jake break screech because the dog just didn't get out of its way. So we almost witnessed a calamity there.
Yeah. And there was a, I kind of learned to turn away from semis when we're on a busy road, because when a semi crosses, it has a ton of wind. So one time, a semi kind of came near us, was going like fifty-five or something, and a rock out of nowhere just like came and struck me right in the nose, so.
He looked at me, back at me because he thought I threw it at him.
And that's where you learn to get along.
Mr. Chairman, so did you guys meet any black and white animals or?
We met one skunk, several raccoons, and a few cats. We actually did-
Oh, yeah.
Found a abandoned kitty on one of the highways that called animal inspection to come get her.
Animal control.
Yeah, animal control.
Animal ins- Yeah, I was, I think we had a picture somewhere in there, but it's a pretty small cat.
Mr. Chairman, so did you get to look up to and see red-headed blackbirds and hawks and eagles and?
A few.
There was, every time we came near like a big, like, concrete culvert, they, like, some of the small birds, I don't know what they're called, would like to make their homes in there. So whenever we got near, there'd probably be like fifty of those like small birds like circling us and like kind of diving down on us.
Especially towards the beginning when they're in the spring.
Yeah, yep. It's a good experience.
Barn swallows.
There you go.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Alrighty. That's a simple presentation, done well. We have a briefing on the upcoming tax deed sale. Mr. Kite.
Yes, morning Commissioners of Ben Kite Auditor's Office. Just wanted to give a briefing to the Commission on our planned tax deed sale. Right now, it's set for September twenty-fifth in this building. But, you know, we have, the Auditor's Office along with the Treasurer's Office has been working diligently for the last many months to identify properties that are primarily four more or four or more years past due in their property taxes. All these property owners have been served notice of that. And so we, at this time, have now as of today eleven such properties that are identified for a potential tax deed sale. I would expect that number to continue to be dwindled down as those owners take action to bring themselves current. But we are proceeding with those. I know this is can, you know, as a public event, that can, you know, get some attention. So I want to make sure that the Commission was aware of our plans to hold this sale. Have any questions?
Questions with Ben, Commissioner Barber.
Do you know how much total of those eleven properties is owed to the county?
I do not, no, no. I would think they probably average around five to ten thousand each, you know, depending on how delinquent they are.
Commissioner Barth?
So Auditor Ben, how long have they gone without paying their taxes?
At minimum of four years. Some of them are five, maybe six years. I don't think we held a tax deed sale in twenty, or, yeah, in 2020. So we've got somewhat of an inventory of these homes that are built up. There is a potential for another sale maybe in the spring as we work through those and get them served and that sort of thing. But, you know, I think we're just trying to get to a point where we clean those up and then we'll get, be more of a regular process.
Is it eleven or twelve? I've heard that.
So I had twelve in my briefing memo, but since then, it's dropped to eleven.
Oh, good.
Right? And I said I would expect that number to continue to dwindle down. You know, it'd be our hope that it would be zero, have no properties. But, you know, I would expect it to be somewhat less as we move forward.
What's the penalty for not paying, I mean, for being that delinquent?
Well, you're charged ten percent interest on the balance due, right? So that's, I guess, the penalty. There's no other additional fees, if that's what you're asking.
Curious, thank you. Alrighty. Again, this is a briefing and with upcoming activity. Thank you very much, Ben. We have a briefing on the NACO Housing and Health Action Learning Cohort. Good morning, Lori.
Good morning, Lori Montes, Human Services. I'm here just to update you all on a project that Human Services engaged in starting in October of 2019 with a scheduled completion date of July of 2020. It was really a partnership with the City of Sioux Falls. NACO had offered this learning cohort and people could have up to four team members that participated in the cohort. And one of the team members had to be a, an elected official. And so Commissioner Bender was on that four-person committee as well as myself and two members from the City of Sioux Falls, one being the City Housing Manager and the other was the Falls Community Health Clinic Manager. Of course, with COVID in 2020, things kind of got off track a fair amount. But we did, fortunately, as we started the project, we met initially in Miami for a one-day session. The five counties that were chosen by NACO to participate in this learning cohort got together. There were some presentations on resources and each county shared what their goals and hopes were as far as an action plan resulting from this learning cohort. We also got in one more in-person visit in February of 2020. Right as COVID was beginning, we met in Washington, D.C. Two members of our team got to go, so myself and the City Housing Manager went to D.C. and again, had presentations, conversed for a one-day period with the other county teams. And I think we did get some good information from that. And following that, then we were to put together our action plan for what each county had hoped to do with this information. And it was really based on looking at affordable, accessible housing and the effects of that on health outcomes for county populations. So then COVID hit. We ended up doing a number of phone calls in 2020 that were all really based on COVID. We kind of got away from kind of what we were doing with our action plans. While we had those goals in place, really the focus of those conversations was really in providing support to county members that were really working hard to deal with COVID in their counties. And so we kind of got back on track toward the end of last year. Had a phone call in December. And then we had one final phone call just in April of this year as the project was extended a little bit just because of the pandemic. And so I included in what I provided some of the progress that we made in the goals that we had established for Minnehaha County. And so we had three goals through the county team. And that was, one, to create a housing trust fund. The Housing, Affordable Housing, you know, Accessible Housing Advisory Board was formed and has been, I think, just starting to look at that housing trust fund. The city, I know, has wanted to move forward on that. Again, with COVID, things were kind of maybe delayed, but I think there are still conversations happening with that, with hopes of moving that forward and getting a housing trust fund in place. There were some speakers that happened during those face-to-face meetings and some of the other counties were also working on establishing housing trust funds. So there's some good resources, I think, out there for that. As far as, as the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, moving forward that, like I said, that board has started meeting. They are starting to work on some other issues. Again, it's been affected some by COVID, but they're in works in trying to move forward with that housing trust fund. The second goal was to establish a housing clinic and create a single entry point for housing services. You all have probably heard that housing services, while plentiful in Sioux Falls and our county, are really difficult to access, right? They kind of refer to it as a plate of spaghetti. So there's all kinds of resources, but none of them really work real well together. And so the city and county were working to establish this housing clinic. We have continued to move forward with that. So in January of this year, the Housing Clinic Coordinator was hired and Amos Abu has been working in that position since January. The City Housing Manager unfortunately left her position. And so, again, I think that put a little bit of a wrench in moving forward with the housing clinic. But we do continue to take steps to move forward with that. Amos comes to our office weekly. We meet with him and talk about kind of what progress he's made in kind of getting everybody on the same page. As far as housing services, he's working to, one of the other action steps here was to develop like a data dashboard in a housing registry. And so he's been making some progress with that. He's been working with the Helpline Center in trying to coordinate a software kind of program with them as far as being a point where people could call and get referred in the appropriate direction. And then also with that, looking at the rental registry. And so working with the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association in putting together maybe an idea of having them be kind of the central point for where people could go that are searching for housing and access not only affordable housing for people, but just general market rent housing as well. Again, trying to make that process more simple for people moving to or moving around within our county. And then our final goal through this learning cohort was to have Falls Community Health work with another federally qualified health center. And so this really was primarily a city goal. But the city Falls Community Health Housing Clinic representative from the team did coordinate with one of the other counties, Walton County. Florida was also a federally qualified health clinic. And so she was able to coordinate with them and kind of try and work on some other things, maybe as far as knowledge and processes that they used in order to help with Falls Community Health. Again, related to COVID, that person from the city became one of the lead people in leading efforts for COVID and housing people and of course, the whole health management piece with COVID. And so sure, sure duties got adjusted a bit during 2020. And she became primarily working on COVID issues. So I am not sure exactly how much other progress she's made on that, but she was put in touch with the Walton County folks. And we were certainly appreciative of partnering with her, not only in this cohort, but also just in getting people through COVID with housing and health issues related specifically to that pandemic. So made some progress on that and more to come, I'm sure. Any questions you have for me on the project?
Commissioner Benning.
Lori, the Chamber has a housing department, so to speak, that specializes in some of the needs of the region. Are they involved in your committee at all?
No, they are not. Not with this project that we're not, no.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
Lori, it's great to have you here, because I do have a question about evictions. There's national news about that. And it seems like the money is there, but it's not been sent out. I know what that's like in our county where we supposedly have money, but it's, can't really see it. But what's going on? Do you have a tsunami of people coming to your door?
We do not. People are starting to come forward. I think now with the eviction moratorium just ending right over the weekend, I am certain that we will see a number of people coming forward that owe multiple months of rent. You do know there's those state funds that are there, the South Dakota Cares dollars that are set aside for that. So the resource is there. Again, it's a staffing issue, I think, primarily for them, that they're processing those applications as fast as they can. But getting the money into the hands of people has been kind of a slower process than we would hope for, certainly. So kind of our role at Human Services, what we'll do is refer people to apply for South Dakota Cares, hopefully get them working with the landlords. And it seems like the bulk of the landlords are certainly willing to work with clients. We've seen that to date anyway. We'll see if that happens now going forward. And then just trying to figure out, you know, if county needs to assist through Human Services in maybe assisting with a rent for a month or a utility as they're working through the South Dakota Cares process, because that is taking longer than, than we would hope.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be nice to have an update in a month or so. I know the landlords need that money too, to pay their property taxes, to pay their utilities. And I don't want to own an apartment building or any other building, honestly, on a tax-taking. But it's, all the way down the line, those monies are needed by people providing housing and people needing, needing housing.
Absolutely, yes. So we, you know, I think going forward, we anticipate being pretty involved in helping people, one, to try and maintain their current housing. And also, we've seen an influx, probably earlier than normal, of people relocating to our area, just because I think we do look good in a number of respects. And so we've had, we always have kind of an influx of families that relocate to our county in August, kind of prior to school starting, but we've seen that start just a little bit earlier. We've had quite a few families come in from out of state that are choosing to resettle here.
Out of state people coming here?
Yes.
Thank you, Lori. A work in progress, to be sure.
For sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving on, we're look, we have a request to display fireworks at Housit Speedway on August twenty-second, 2021. Had conversations with the fireworks display individual. He can't be here and I don't think anybody from Housits is able to attend.
I wasn't aware.
Okay, what do you have?
Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The action requested today is to consider a motion to approve a request to display fireworks. Mike Denning with Fireworks Stores requesting authorization to discharge fireworks at Housit Speedway on August twenty-seventh, 2021. Pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law thirty-four thirty-seven fourteen and thirty-four thirty-seven thirteen point one, South Dakota counties have the statutory authority to issue permits for the use of display fireworks and consumer fireworks at public and private events. Minnehaha County does not have an ordinance covering the discharge of fireworks within its boundaries and does not currently have a fireworks permit application in place for display or consumer fireworks at public and private events. The form submitted by Mike Denning was not provided by the county or state. Attached is a fireworks form, certificate of liability insurance naming Minnehaha County as additional insured, and an email from Split Rock Fire Department Chief Joe Eggy, supporting the fireworks display. The Minnehaha County Emergency Management Director was also, has also reviewed the documents and has no concerns.
Questions, Commissioner Bender.
Well, I had several conversations with Mr. Denning and I was actually quite disappointed that neither he nor anyone from Housits. I had specifically asked that somebody from Housits be here today. I explained that we've had several complaints. I live out near Brandon, I hear Housits when they run because my house isn't that far away. And there have been complaints about how late Housits has been running. They had indicated to us early on that they were going to be done by ten-thirty. And there have been several times where they have not done that. And, you know, weather happens, things- happens, things happen. Um, but, um, I did talk to Mr. Denning yesterday, and he, um, has been in touch with Hewsett's. They only are running two races the night of this fireworks display. And he, um, assured me that they would start the fireworks by ten and be done by ten-thirty. And, um, I'm willing to, to vote in favor of this tonight. But if that commitment is not meant, I will not vote in favor of future fireworks displays out there.
I would, I appreciate your comments because, uh, I've had some feedback about the races also. And, uh, I think that we need to make sure that the intent is followed up with.
All righty.
I think that we're gonna look at doing fireworks ordinance at some point, which we can put a little more direction in there and have a form that comes from Minnehaha County instead of just everybody having a different form would be helpful. And maybe one of the things we need to look at too is, is artillery shells are, you know, common and they are, they're explosive. I mean, I mean, just as far as they make a lot of noise. And so, I mean, those are one of the things we maybe look at in the future too is, you know, do we say no, no artillery ones after ten o'clock either? Just because it's, those are the sonic boom-like ones. So, I don't know. It's just future conversation.
I share everyone's concerns and I appreciate Commissioner Bender looking into it. And I'm just, uh, let's make sure they do it right. And maybe we need to have a application form that, uh, with emergency management or, uh, something like that, that people fill out. Does our civil deputy have an opinion? One more time, I'm sorry. Does, does Eric have a, a thought about it?
Mr. Chairman, we actually now do have a permit application. I have modified one for our use. It has not been adopted by you folks yet. So in, in a strict sense, we still don't have one. Um, as Commissioner, uh, Hager has mentioned, I would also recommend that we adopt, uh, a more comprehensive ordinance in place so that there are some guidelines for applicants to know what is appropriate, what is not appropriate, if there are timelines that you would like to adopt, those kind of things, or the nature of the particular displays themselves. So, um, there are guidelines, both national, uh, and, uh, fire safety issues that, that are applicable as well as distance from the display to the spectators that are, are important to, to keep in mind. And some of that's built into the form that Mr. Denning submitted here, but it's, needs a little updating, which is why I've already undertaken that. But he didn't sign that version, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to display your fireworks.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Hager? All righty. My only comment, I guess, would be, you know, Sunday night's different than a Friday or Saturday night. You know, some races are gonna go. Races, cars going around the track, you know, till eleven, twelve at night are just as loud as fireworks. So it's not the fireworks that we're just addressing. It's the, the noise in general. And, um, you know, if you're gonna have races on a Sunday or a Thursday or whatever, um, the expectation of the public is a lot different than it would be on a Friday or Saturday night. So, I'm just, something to consider, I guess. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty. We have a amendment to the Tegra Group Consulting Agreement for the Extension Admin Building Remodel. Carol.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Tegra has served with us. This is our third project that we're doing with them on, uh, serving as essentially an owner's representation for us. And, uh, we have, our experience with them has been is that they save us a lot of money and, uh, make sure that the projects come in on time, under budget. And, uh, our scope is exactly where it needs to be. So, um, this, we've already started the progress. We have an amend, we have a contract already with Tegra for the Extension Admin Remodeling. We had one amendment that was done because we did some changes with, uh, an architect's RFP. This one is a amendment looking at, now that we've gotten past what I wanna call the pre-con or the pre-construction stage, what their services will be during the timeframe as to when construction actually starts to take place. So with that, the total would be three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. We've already paid Tegra a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And this new amendment would add, um, sixteen months at seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per month for a total of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So, um, um, Civil did some restating on this, reaffirmed the contract, and, uh, would look forward for your approval.
Questions?
Do you need to fill this out then?
One more time?
I, I just wondered if I needed to fill out the, the blanks on this page besides the smiley faces that I, people.
I think we got it covered. All righty. Um, look for a motion to, uh, authorize me to sign the amendment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're to the point of liaison reports. Commissioners.
Sorry.
Commissioner Barth?
Um, just in reading the Brandon newspaper, I see that they are looking at asking for joint jurisdiction outside of the city of Brandon, uh, which we have with Dell Rapids and Sioux Falls at this point. Not heard from anyone that it's come to us in actuality. Mr. Bog, have you heard anything from the city of Brandon, uh, that they wanna do joint jurisdiction?
Only that I've heard that statement made. I've not heard directly from the city itself, so.
Yeah, the other thing I would report is there was only one appeal from our last, uh, planning and zoning meeting. And it was for the, uh, piles of lime off of Highway one fifteen. The lime that is used to, uh, clean drinking water, uh, in the city. Apparently the city's contracting with this person to, uh, store it. And, uh, the neighbors don't like it. And, uh, we approved their continued operation for five years, but that's not good enough, I guess. So that should be coming to us.
Okay. Other liaison reports. I had a meeting last week, uh, the LINK Board, and, um, very productive meeting, good meeting. Um, looking for a new executive director. Um, got the field narrowed down to two choices. Um, we're trying to decide, or the decision is being made as to who the job will be offered to. Um, I did forward to Carol. I don't know if she's sent it on. I know Carol, with Carol's background in Human Services and, um, yeah, working with the population that the LINK serves, that she could appreciate the, um, the numbers and the activity. And, um, and she did. Um, what's happening there is what it was designed to do, and things are moving definitely in the right direction. Services being provided and, uh, the less stress on our emergency departments and, um, also our jail. Um, talked to, um, Jeff Gromer, Chief Deputy, and he was very happy and pleased with the transition from the old to the new. It took a lot of coordination, a lot of meetings and talking, but everything's come off very well. And our, I could say, I believe our first sixty days have been very successful. So, yeah. That's all I got for liaison. Anybody else? Old business? New business? In either order? All righty. Um, we are gonna.
Motion to recess for purposes of SDL, whatever that is.
No, we're just gonna do a recess. Uh, motion to recess for, that's, it's ten o'clock. We'll go to ten-ten. So look for a second.
Bender will second that.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. We're at recess. Ten minutes.
Rhonda, okay.